Welcome to the City of Laurel City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. By your presence in the city council chambers, you are participating in the process of representative government. We will have a time later for anybody who would like to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. The duration is a three-minute time limit for that. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council President Sparks. Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Council Vice President Wilkie.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Closey. Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Canopy.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of June 10th, 2025.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the minutes of city council minutes of June 10, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Vice President Wilkie, seconded by Councilmember Myers. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. I just noticed, is that your wife? I thought so. What are you sitting with him for? Correspondence, we have the fire monthly reports of May 2025 and bare-toothed RCND. Correspondence, do we have any disclosure of expertise? Next, we will move into a public hearing for the water and wastewater rate increase. This time and place is set for a public hearing in the City of Laurel's to approve zone change and zoning map. Whoa, whoa, whoa. What? Yeah.
Oh, she hasn't.
You copied it wrong. You're fired. Well, never mind about that. This is for the water and wastewater rate increase. I am opening the public hearing. And would ask staff to explain what's going on.
So approximately a year and a half ago, our auditors informed us that we needed to take a look at our rates. It's not anything that us as staff, you know, are really particular. I mean, we try to avoid that if possible. However, it's been 10 years since anything had been done about it. The company that we ultimately hired, we were with them and watched them 100% of the way. Kelly, myself, the mayor. It really was an involved process, and I thought they did a tremendous, tremendous job of getting this done.
I will open the floor for public comment. Copies of the rules governing the public hearing have been posted in the council chambers. Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents supporting the item? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents not supporting the item?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a text message from a constituent. I couldn't get him to send an email. And I can't convert his text message into a readable document that we can share with the city in, in paper form. So, but I did promise him that I would share his comment. His address is... Name is Lance Graham, 1023 12th Avenue. Comment is, "I think you're my representative on the Laurel City Council. Maybe we, maybe we do need a water rate increase. Not sure about that. My concerns are that every dollar better be used for water and sewer, not for general fund or the city to use on whatever they want. Roads, parks, pay raises, increase, or et cetera. Infrastructure only. We can't just keep raising rates. Maybe reach out to some outlying subdivisions and get more customers to raise more revenue. Also, I disagree with charging some people more money per gallon of water than others. Doesn't seem fair to me. Maybe even illegal. I might look into that. If the city's goal is to turn everything brown and ugly in this town, then that is what you're going to do. I've lived here my entire life, and it is, it gets worse and rundown all the time. Now let's raise prices for people watering their lawns and make it even worse. I don't have time to go to the meetings. I would hope that you could pass on how I feel about it anyway. Sorry about the rant, but I don't think one person should pay more for a gallon of water than another. Then I responded to him, asking him to do this. My last comment to him was... Lance, to let you know, I will share your thoughts with the council at the next week's meeting, which will also be a public hearing on this very subject. If you could find time to, at 1800, to attend, either way, your thoughts will be shared. So, to be clear, you would say, and I capitalize, "no" to the rate changes proposed. He said, "Most definitely, no." Thank you.
I'm sorry?
My name is Marianne O'Connell, and I have lived in Laurel for five years. My water bill is always about $100, at least. I'm the only person that lives there. I don't have a wash machine. I don't put on the sprinklers. I can't afford to use that much water. I'm, I don't, and I actually drink bottled water, and I use it for, for cooking. I, I just received a bill for the sewer for $120. I received another bill that was, that is for $127, but there's no itemized, itemized statements on it there. I don't know what's, what I'm being charged for, but I'm being threatened to having my water discontinued. I've lived in four states, including Italy, and I have never had a water bill this high before. I know people that live in Billings, and they moved out of Laurel because the water rates were too high. I, I'm not a big user of water as one person. I have three cats, and they don't take showers. And I'd like to know something what's going on. Why is this so, so difficult to, to fix? I know that you have, you know, a sewer that needs some maintenance and some improvements. I've spent a lot of money fixing the plumbing in my home. And that's what I have to say for now.
Thank you.
Enjoy the storm.
Marianne, you're, I received your letter, and so I do have an itemized bill for you. If you're not busy afterwards, I'd definitely go over it with you if you would like.
Anything else? Since there's no further public comment? And staff has responded. Which one? Oh, actually, we did get one by email from Robert Mann, 320 Second Avenue, Laurel, Montana. "I don't believe you..." Need, "There is a need for water and wastewater rate increases. If you're going to build more reservoirs or install new water and sewer lines, show me when and where. Maybe then rate increases would make more sense." So, I am, with nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Consent agenda. We, Councilmember Myers.
Sorry, we had to not have our budget finance meeting today because we didn't have a quorum. So we will have to remove from the consent agenda item number six. And seven. No. Yes? Yes. Five and six. There we go. There we go. Items number five and six, please, before we approve them.
Any council discussion on that? All in favor?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda with the removals of items five and six.
There you go. Motion made by Councilmember Myers, seconded by Councilmember McKay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Nothing on ceremonial calendar? You have the reports of boards and commissions? We now have audience participation. On anything not on tonight's agenda, boy, it's coming down. I have to plant a second garden, I mean, or third garden. Okay, I hear you. Schedule matters. We have the appointment of Mr. Jason Gonzalez as the building official.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve the appointment of Jason Gonzalez as the building official.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Canopy, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Public comment. Jason, come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Hello. My name's Jason Gonzalez. I've been with the city for about two and a half years now, and pleased to work here, so. That's all I got.
Okay. Council, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Jason, here's your letter.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. The attorney would like to speak on the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note, I work in my role relatively closely with Jason. In my experience, when we talk about municipal positions, the role of building inspectors or building officials is one of the hardest positions to fill. It's very happy, very difficult to keep everyone happy when you're dealing with contractors on one side of things, builders, property owners, and to ensure compliance with the laws in order to make sure that our constituents are safe. And Jason has an incredible amount of grace in that role, and I think he is just an exceptional addition to the City of Laurel. So I appreciate everything that you do, Jason, and the hard work that you put in.
I believe Matt can attest to how hard he works, so. Thank you, Jason. Next, we have a motion to allow Councilmember Sparks to be absent from the City of Laurel for more than 10 days.
Mr. Mayor, I move to allow Councilmember Sparks to be absent from the City of Laurel for more than 10 days.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Banks, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have the appointment of Gary Blaine to the Laurel Airport Authority for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2030.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the mayor's appointment of Gary Blaine to the Laurel Airport Authority for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2030.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember McKay, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. We have an appointment of Richard Closey to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint the mayor's appointment of Richard Closey to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Wheeler, seconded by Councilmember Myers. Public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have the appointment of Ken Olson to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve your appointment of Ken Olson to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second. Who cut that second? Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Myers, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have the appointment of Tom Canopy to the City County Planning Board for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve your appointment of Tom Canopy to the City County Planning Board for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Banks, seconded by Councilmember Myers. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have the appointment of Richard Herr to the, I haven't said that name in a while. Appointment of Richard Herr to the City County Planning Board for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve your appointment of Richard Herr to the City County Planning Board for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Wheeler, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have a resolution, R25-40, is a resolution of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement by and between the City of Laurel and Yellowstone City County Health Department doing business as Riverstone Health.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve resolution number R25-40.
Motion made by Councilmember Myers, seconded by Councilmember McKay. Any public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Next, we have a resolution, R25-41, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor service contract with True North Contract.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve of resolution number R25-41.
Motion made by Councilmember Canopy, seconded by Councilmember Wheeler. Any public comment? Any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes... Did you catch it? Was it six, six, zero? Next, we have a resolution, R25-42. Resolution approving an increase to the City of Laurel's water and wastewater rates and charges to become effective on July 10th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve resolution number R25-42.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember McKay, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. Any public comment? Council discussion? Councilmember McKay.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we've got some viewers and maybe some others. If, Matt, if you would just talk a little bit again about the needs coming up. The, the water tower was mentioned in that letter, just kind of why we're doing this and what the hope is with the rate increase. Would you mind? Thank you.
So, as a lot of you know, we have started some big projects. And we started a new intake in a river. We built a new water plant. And the third part of that is to construct a new reservoir, and it is for multiple, multiple reasons. Number, probably the biggest reason right now is the reservoir that we currently use is one. We used to have two in the city. One of them is no longer functional. The one that we call the new reservoir was actually built in 1968. And in my, in my mind, that's not new. It is in great shape. However, we would like to take it down and completely, completely redo it. We are doing some major maintenance on it this fall. A company is coming in to do the inside, any repairs that we can do without draining the tank. So that's a very expensive project coming up, hopefully. The rates will definitely help in that direction. The maintenance on water lines around town is, we have a lot of old, old lines and old valves, stuff that needs to be replaced. The fact of the matter is, is we, we would like to get going on some of these projects. So it just takes time to get everything put together. And as I mentioned before, it, it's not staff's intent or anybody's intent to just randomly raise water rates. You can tell that we don't like to do that. It's been a long time. These rates that the, the company that we hired to figure out and talking amongst us, they, they look fair and equitable for everybody.
Councilmember Myers?
I just wondered if Kelly would like to follow up with something similar, addressing the concerns that the funds would not be used outside of water projects, because it is a capital fund, correct? An enterprise fund. Thank you. Could you explain it just a tad bit for people listening?
So the money that is brought in for water and sewer are enterprise and garbage are all enterprise funds. Those funds stay strictly in that account. None of that money can be used for, to operate the general fund, this, you know, the street department. Any of those are strictly enterprise funds, and the money that we bring in will go strictly to O and M costs, debt service costs, capital projects. And then we do have reserve requirements that we have to meet along with the debt service coverage. So we do have loans also on the wastewater and, on wastewater and at the sewer, or water plant, excuse me. And so one of the main reasons for the wastewater increase is we were not meeting debt covenants.
Councilmember McKay.
Thank you. So just clarify again, water rates in Laurel have not been increased since 2015, so 10 years. Have expenses gone up in that time? Do you have, I know this is probably something I should have asked earlier so that you had an idea, but do you have a guess on like how much things have gone up in those 10 years while rates have stayed stagnant?
I know chlorine that we use for treatment at the water plant has went up 150% at least, and it's hard to get now. We don't have a vendor anymore in, in Laurel or in Billings. It comes out of Colorado. So we also get tagged, along with the product, we get tagged for trucking. That's, that's just, has just come up. I, if I can just state also, we tried to design this plan to be minimal for the resident. The resident really wasn't causing some issues that we might have had with pipes, you know, being hammered. So, and the biggest cost to our, our treatment comes from our big users. The industry users and stores and stuff. They required a third shift to be put on, you know, so we have all that, and wages are going up. Costs of living for our employees and everything. So we tried to keep the residential to a minimum. Yes, it, it penciled out that we were giving, that we are increasing, but the bulk of the increase is coming from our industrial users and like the stores and stuff, so. But yeah. Repairs, our pump repairs are just, they've went up astronomically. So, yeah, in the 10 years, everything's probably went up a minimum of 100% when you start using, you know, chemicals and treatment for both plants. So, anything else? Okay, where are we at now? Oh, ready for a vote. Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero. Next, we have an ordinance number 25, R25-01. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 12.28 Park Rules and Regulations and repealing Chapter 12.32 Trees and Boulevards of the Laurel Municipal Code.
Your Honor, I visited with the city attorney and the present member, Michelle Myers about this ordinance, and we find an error here that we need to have corrected. So we would like to table this, that error being in here that there would be four to six members. We initially decided that we needed to have five to seven, and better yet, five to nine, so that we have an adequate number. One reason is that we can, we're only allowed to have four council members on this board, and that only allows for three at large. We would like to have that opened up so there are more opportunities for folks that would like to join us in these two endeavors that, that could come and join us and still have the opportunity for council members to be present and that uneven number so that if we have a tie vote, we can break it. So we would like to table it. Thank you.
Could that be a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. A date?
You, you want to make a formal motion to table to the next meeting to allow me time to make these changes, and then we'll bring it back up at the next. To allow me time to make these changes and then we'll bring it back up at the next full meeting?
Absolutely, that, that, what, what is convenient for you, so we don't put any hardships on you.
That's not a problem at all. So I think for a date certain, do we understand correctly that the motion is to table to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is? What's the next? For July first and voting on the eighth.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, the motion was made to table by Vice President Wilkie, seconded by Councilmember Mize. Um. Public comment? Council discussion? All in favor to table? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is tabled till the first. Um, I, what did we remove? Okay, five and six. From the agenda? Community announcements. Any council discussion? Uh, no mayor updates? Oh, yeah. Unscheduled matters you have before you. Resolution number R twenty-five. Dash forty-three. It's a resolution of the City Council approving, and this just came up quick, so that's why we brought it. It, it was worked on last couple of weeks. This is just. We just got the bond yesterday from them, so this would actually be an attachment. But uh, it's a resolution of the City Council approving the performance bond provided by Loves. Travel Stops and Country Stores Inc. as principal and the city of Laurel as surety. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um, first, our apologies for putting this under unscheduled matters. As council knows, sometimes we have these things that are a little bit more urgent to get addressed that come up mid-cycle. This is one of those particular matters. This is related to the pending Loves annexation. Um, as council knows, there's been a number of things in front of council related to this annexation, including the approval of the latecomers and development agreement. The performance bond um, is what is required under the annexation agreement. Related to posting the surety for the infrastructure improvements that will be made for this particular project. We did not have this in time to get it on the formal agenda for council and we just received it in and I was able. We were able to get the resolution drafted today. Um, the performance bond is a standard bond issued by Fidelity and it secures the work that will be done on this project. Uh, in discussions um, that I've had with Matt and with Kurt on this, and the mayor on this particular matter. This surety bond well covers what we anticipate the costs of those improvements to be. So we're comfortable with the level of performance that's required under it. One of the reasons we wanted to get it on council cycle tonight to be considered is because. Loves is anxious to move forward with this project, so we're hoping to get finalization of the annexation. With in front of council, potentially in a special meeting in the next week, if not for sure on the next cycle. So this is one of the last requirements that we had related to the annexation agreement. And we wanted to have council consider it so that when the actual approval of the final annexation comes in front of you. You know that we have met from the city's end of things, all of the terms that are required for Loves to move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Councilmember Mize?
Thank you. So I'm not real familiar with terms like surety, so I just want to clarify, see if I'm on the right track. This big three, three million dollar number, that's their expense, not ours, correct? Okay, and we're saying that essentially we think they can do the project up to that amount of money.
Yes, that is correct. I think the, in the discussions, and we've had a lot of discussions as city staff with Loves on this project. I don't think anyone anticipates that the infrastructure costs will be that high. I think Loves has. Has, you know, really from a comprehensive standpoint, anticipated kind of the worst case standpoint as far as costs. And to make sure that we have the protection we need for that infrastructure, we're comfortable with that figure as well. But I don't think we anticipate it will come close to approaching those figures.
Council Vice President Wilkie?
If we're ready, your honor, I would move to approve uh, resolution twenty-five dash forty-three.
Uh, motion made by Council Vice President Wilkie, seconded by Councilmember Mize. McKay, sorry, sorry. Um, public comment? Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes um, six to zero. Lastly. I was just handed the uh, openings for commissions. Uh, Public Works has nobody? Oh, okay. Okay, so there are two Public Works. There is one Cemetery Commission for a two-year term. There's a library board for a five-year. What are these other ones? CCHV. Oh, I knew that. City County Planning Board, we have one for two years. Is that still a thing? Yellowstone Historic Pro- uh, Preservation Board. There's a two-year term length on that one. So if anybody's interested, we still have some. Who wants to go home?
Hold on, I have one more thing. Um, I'm not sure if all of you know, but um, it was the mayor's birthday. So we need to sing happy birthday to the mayor.
You're too late. It was two days ago.
Happy to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Thank you, everybody, especially you, Councilmember Canopy.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adjourn the council meeting.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Mize to adjourn, seconded by Vice President Wilkie. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.